Okay, I'm gonna whiteboard it. Okay. So this is for building HTML systems. So this moved a little bit. Alright, doesn't matter. So, um, I need to get some work done. I feel like I need to make fast progress. And so what I was gonna do today was convert JavaScript to CoffeeScript, and I said, "Let's not do that, let's just, let's make progress." So, for, I'm calling this BHTMS, Building HTML Systems. I want to, uh... finish basic encoders section. Just the ba-- there's a lot more ideas for encoders that I'm, that I'm gonna make space for. So I'm gonna plan, I've got like three hours to work on this, so I'm gonna work three hours straight on this today. So I'm gonna plan my time out a little bit. Um, I'm gonna make space for extra encoders. And I'm gonna try and do this in a way so that others can come behind and implement their own types of encoders if they like, to add to the documentation if they wanna help. So I'll, I'll try and provide guidance for the, for those encoders. I might even provide some text, some prose that describes the encoder or something. Um, but the end result would be a visualization that could, of a potential encoder that could go into this interactive document. But basically, I want, I've already, I wanna get done, you know, numbers. I, I, not numbers really. Uh, I've already got a scaler, a category encoder. Um, I've already done the periodicity, which is required for the category encoder, so I'll just leave it up. Um, so the, the ones that I'm gonna make room for are like R D S E, other types, other scaler encoders like, um, Brev's recent Sim Hash. Time, right? I wanna make sure that the time, if I can do scaler in time honestly and category, that's all I need to move on, 'cause I, 'cause then we wanna get to the Spatial Pooler. When we get there, I think it'll get fun, and that's when people will, will get engaged, because we'll be actually exercising and writing HTML theories into code. So I wanna make, I wanna get this done as quickly as I can so we can move to S P and do some fun stuff. Um, so I'm not gonna do styling right now. I'm not going to worry about how any of the documentation looks or feels necessarily. I'm gonna focus on prose and diagrams. So let's look at our Trello board and make sure that we're aligned with this. Again, um, I think I have a shortcut for this. Trello. Yeah. That goes to my main page, but this is the actual... This is the... That's not, that's not a link, but... In case you can't get to it from there. Um, so I changed a little bit of this, I think, already. So let's look at what we have in To Do. Um, some of this is just basic. We have to just finish out writing, uh... components into diagrams, like these, um, previous encoders into diagrams. And then, uh, and figure out how, how those map to React features and React interactions. Um, so we've got a bit of that done, and I think we have one, one encoder done. Um, that's why I have all of these in reviews, 'cause I basically finished up one, that's what we did in our last session a week ago. Um, today we're just going to, I'm gonna be moving content, and I think I had a... Here we go. Yeah, move encoding numbers text from WordPress to the new page, and, and I think we're just gonna be continuing to move content. I'm not gonna do the CoffeeScript thing. And I'm gonna do this when I need it. Right, right now I'm gonna work on completing the encoding numbers page and work on the next diagram. And if anybody wants to help me create unit tests, that'd be great. Um, I don't think I'm going to try and unit test the React components for building HTML systems. I will absolutely test Simple HTML, because that's really the code that we're concerned about writing well and implementing HTML theory properly. So we will test the heck out of Simple HTML as we build out the Spatial Pooler and the encoders that we're using, but I'm not gonna test the heck out of the React components that show the diagrams. From my experience, the type of interaction we're doing with these things, the only way to really test that they work is to interact with them. Um, okay, so let's do this right now. Let me get my terminal window up. Go into N T A, and this is in Building HTML Systems. Could pull upstream just in case I missed anything. Sometimes I develop on my laptop. And let's make a branch. Let's do, let's do this the right way. Check out branch add number encoder content. And that's where we'll add the number encoder content. Let's, uh, code. So we're gonna open in VS Code, and I am going to also turn on live sharing. So this'll start a collaborative section, um... or a collaborative session, excuse me, with me. So I'm posting this into chat. If anybody wants to, um, join while I'm working on this project, you can with that link, and you have to have Virtual Studio code installed. And this, I probably have to install a plugin, I don't know. Um, okay, anyway, let's run it. Um, I have to remind myself every time. It's been a week, right? So I have to remind myself every time how to run every project I work on, 'cause I, they're all, they all seem to be a little different. Uh, okay, starting up the server. Get rid of this, this was last week's work. This was also Friday, my Friday failure. Let's not talk about the Friday failure. We're gonna reattack tomorrow and do well. Uh, alright, so here's where we were at. I've got a header, I was starting to add styling here. So basically, as far as I got with styling on this was just like putting a shell up, like here's where the CSS would go for this or that. Um, and then we got this working, for the most part. It's a little bit buggy, right? And, and there's a bug filed for it. So now what I wanna do is, uh... Where is that stupid link? There it is. I've gotta get the content from... What account did I use for this, or did I? Hold on. Passwords. Building HTML Systems. I think this is the one. I hope. Maybe that wasn't the one, hold on. Maybe it was this one. No, no, definitely wasn't that one. Okay, I have to check my email now. Log into WordPress. Yes, I do wanna log into WordPress, it's what I've always wanted to do. Hold on, I'm almost there. Almost there. Enter the verification code from the text message. Hold on. I love internet security nowadays. I mean, I'm glad that they're... I'm glad they're looking out for me. You know? Glad somebody's looking out for me. Okay, so now it should work, I hope. Please? Alright, great. Uh, my site. I just got an email that said, "Somebody tried to log into your account now." Uh, okay. Site, pages. We want Building HTML Systems. So this is the site. We wanna go to, we've already got this content. Now we need this content, encoding numbers. And this is gonna include, um, code syntax highlighting and putting, sort of scaffolding up for the diagrams. So, encoding numbers. This is the best way I know to do this, is to actually go into WordPress, copy all this jazz. And I mean, we're basically gonna turn, gonna turn this into a React page. That's the idea. So, encoding numbers, here's where we are. This is gonna be awfully messy. I almost wanted to just like paste, do, just do a little bit by bit. So I definitely don't want this. Uh... Yeah, I'm gonna do bit by bit, and, and we're gonna dump it in a little bit by, by bit, and make sure that it looks okay. So, so like this should go in here under the layout. Let's get it indented properly. Alright, and, and now let's look at it, I wanna make sure that it looks okay. Yeah, okay. And even this thing, I'm adding a... Okay, so I'm just manually adding these anchors, which is fine, I don't care. Uh, okay, so here's where we get to the code example. So now let's look at the component showcase where we have a code example. So here is... So this code block, he's got a code block contents like this. So that, this is the type of thing I wanna do. I wanna put a literal string template. And the, so the code block is gonna go into literal string template. So let's grab the code block first, and do that. Okay, so here's the whole code block for the first example. You guys following me, is this logical? You're nerd! You're a nerd! You're watching it! Nerds! That would be a good GIF from Revenge of the Nerds. Is it, that's what it reminded me of. Nerds! What was that guy? Anyway, um... Um, encoding numbers in the wrong place. Alright, so I'm gonna put the code block. Constant, uh, example 1 equals multiline template. Why is this not... Why is this not, that didn't... Do I have to put this? Hold on, let's try, um, let's try something else. That, that was weird. When I put constant, it didn't like keyword it. Okay, um, example 1. So this, I should be able to do multiline string like this, right? And now I can, yeah, so that's what I wanted. So big code example. And I'm gonna put, I'm gonna declare it outside of the React component. Because if I put it in the React component, it didn't like it. So I won't do it. That's fine. Um, so then we need to take the line of code like this with the code tag. And... Okay, highlighted lines, alright, we'll get to that, right? Were there highlighted lines in this example? No. Okay, so I don't need highlighted lines. But I will, I love that feature. So no code line, so just code and code block contents, and that's it. So we're gonna just put example 1 here. And we probably have to like format this a little, so... Yeah, let's call, let's use this div for now. I know, I'm sure there's like a better React-y way to do this, right? But, but really all I want is for the code to have an ID and a class. So I wonder, maybe I don't need this at all. Let me just leave this off and see what happens. Ten stack frames. Okay, what is the process, what's the problem? This is like, so something in my... Right before the code, so line 68. Oh! Is it because of these code? Code blocks, I wonder? Probably is. Yeah, it's because, oh, okay, that's the problem. So if I'm, so I used this, um, oh, who helped you with this? It was, uh, the... Faradislaw installed this code component. And it, here it is. So maybe I can change the name of it. Because it's a problem... Let's call it code syntax. Can I do this? I'm gonna try. I hope. Export code syntax. That would be great if that were doable. Um, because I think the problem is just that I'm trying to use a code and for like a legitimate usage of the HTML thing code. So let's see if this works. Code syntax, code syntax. If this, if this would, if this works, that would be very cool. Code syntax is not defined. So, uh, that's probably because I'm... I know there is a place that this was... Oh, I have to change the name, right? To code syntax. I'm, I bet. Is that gonna automatically reload? Probably not. A name change like that, you usually have to restart your server. Let's have it look right. Uh, so still code syntax is not defined. So where else? This is a React component that someone else made for me. Is there any other place? Or we're just saying code? Code, 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 code. Code. Is there a configuration? No, um... Index, comments, layout. It should be, we should be... Okay, so this links to simple scaler encoder, but this one does not go to code syntax. Why is that? Because I'm, so, so I will have to import it, I guess. If I import code syntax from... Components, code syntax. Okay, that worked. Okay. And so I can still use the code now. Okay, great. Excellent. Um... Something worked! Oh! Something worked! That was a little loud, wasn't it? The cow's not loud enough. Uh, okay, so there's one code example. Let's go back to this. Uh... I'm not sure if I want, okay, we'll, we'll, won't worry about the styling. Okay, so now this is something that describes the code example. Okay, so, so I do want to retain this somehow. This is my code syntax, and I want to... What's going on here? One too many divs. I'm not sure if this is actually gonna work right. I'm suspect, suspicious. That I can just like create... Let's see. Now there it is. Good and constant values, and it links to code example 1. Oh, oh, that's why I, um, put an ID on that. So I wonder, can I put an ID here? Call this code example 1? Does that be perfect? If so, this should pop it... Clicking this should pop it up, but it doesn't, no. I could probably, um, well, I could change the code to do that. Code, code syntax to do that, right? We should be getting props. Yeah, here's the props. So whoops. It's calling something called syntax highlighter. That is coming from something else. So React syntax highlighter. So now I've gotta go this far deep. Would be, the easier thing would, would honestly be... to, um... Do this. Div ID. Oh, there it is. How evil is that? So code example in a div. So now I should be able to click on this and pop up. That's what I wanna do. Code example, pop up to the div. I'm, I don't have a problem with that, and if anybody else isn't, I have a problem with that. That's just some of the sacrifices you have to make. Okay, um, next. So given that, and then we've got another sort of scripty thing. So it's... Get rid of you. What are you, what is this? Let me just close all this stuff. Close to the right. There we go. Coding numbers. That should look good, given that value, okay? And then we have this little jazz. So we want to add this in another code. Code syntax, code syntax. And this is gonna be example 2. We're just gonna keep it simple, example 2. And of course, since we did this already, div ID equals code. Is that what I call that, code example 2? Encoding example 1. Okay. Coding example 1. Okay. And... This is gonna be... The... What do you call it? Tagline or whatever? Um, coding example 1. So this... Encoding 1, I'll call it. We might come back and clean this later. Coding 1 equals multiline string template. And this is where we'll dump all of this, this array. And then I think that's it, I think that's all we need for that. Let's see how it looks. Didn't like that, didn't like example 2. There it is. Okay, good, sort of. Let's, let's back that up one. Let's back this up one too, 'cause it's probably the same issue. Yeah. Uh, so I am gonna change the formatting a little bit on this one, um, just because... Whoops. It's not what I wanted. I think that's better. One space. One space. It's not perfect, but it'll do. Okay. Um... Alright, back to this. Using, now we have another paragraph that we will add. We're not even to the point of... Actually, this is right before it. Using the code shown... Above, we can create an interactive visualization of this encoder. If you hover over the scalar value access in figure 1 below, which I have not... So this should be simple scaler encoder. Alright, so I have not... Is this, if I call this simple scaler encoder, will that work? 'Cause that would be excellent. I hope it does, 'cause I've made that one. I can't tell, it should've added the ID. There should be an ID for simple scaler encoder in here. How, how can I do that? Simple scaler encoder, not in the... I wanna search the HTML in the elements. Can I do that? Yeah, simple scaler encoder, it's there! No, yeah, it is there, it's the SVG ID. So that's great, so, so that means we can link between them, um, on the page just by updating the name. So there's a point that we had that ID there, I almost took that out. I almost took that out. I'm glad I didn't waste that work. Let's go... Back to coding numbers. We're all the way to here. So we actually, we've got it in place, but we need the figure. Um, we need the description, excuse me, the figure description. So that's what this is. I can just copy and paste it, and then we've got the figure. And I'm calling these diagrams now, not figures, but... Okay. In the text, we'll call them figure. See how that looks. There we go, figure 1. Figure 1. Value between, and we'll, we'll do the, um, the styling and everything later. We can do that anytime. Anybody can help with that, by the way. If you wanna try and give it a style, create a branch on GitHub, on Git, I mean. Create a branch and give the styles a go. The styles are, um... Over here, there's a, there's a CSS file for the header, there's one for the layout. And the layout, you can put anything. That's where you can, and each, each component, if, you can style individually, I guess, using local styling. I think that's, that's the way people have told me to do it. Uh, using like the React way. Um, okay, so now we have got some paragraphs and block quotes, and then another code example. So let's do the paragraphs and block quotes. That one went into place and the other didn't. Okay. How does that look? Great. So for code, apply the message index, okay. And then we have another code example, which, here we go. Let's pull this out, this is gonna be code example 2. Code example 2. Oops. We're gonna put it up here. Const code example 2 equals that. And I'm gonna need a new line at the end. I don't think any of these should have a new line at the end, honestly. Probably doesn't matter. Code example 2, okay. Um, so we have the code example, and now we just need the code, and then this little... This is, this isn't too hard. So we create a div, we say ID code example 2. We put... Code syntax in it. Why does it, why didn't it... What are you doing? Stop it! Formatting is doing something very strange, okay. Code example 2. Okay, and now we've got this. Kaboom! There we go. Code example 2, links to it, right? Can't go up any further, but... And then this... Goes to a different page. Oh, I should probably fix that. Um, major rules established earlier, where is that? Major rules. This should be a relative link. Whoa, 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 whoa. This should be a relative link. We could just have it go smack dab to encoders. Okay, so tell us about those major rules established earlier. 404. Um, really? Is it because of the slash? It's because of the slash. Oh, that's weird. Okay, but... Is it because of the slash? It's because of the slash. Oh, that's weird. Okay, but I'll deal with that later. Okay, coding numbers. You're really filling this out now. That works. Do these links work? Figure one, that works. That works. There was another link I wanted to test that I didn't quite test. Code example one, that works, okay. Encoding example one, works. That was it. Okay, so we just did the example two. Copied it to the clipboard even. Um. Forgot what I was doing, okay. Now when you hover over, you'll see, okay, uh, so now we need oh, this one is supposed to be highlighted. Wait, what did I do here? Did I delete the? Yeah, 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 so I need to highlight this one. This last one I did needs to be highlighted. The code syntax, and the example of this was here. Highlighted lines equals, and that can just be an array. So highlighted lines uh twenty-one through twenty-eight. So does that mean I need to? I guess I can do that. I'll just do that. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I'm not sure if that's the best way to do it, but it worked. Excellent. Uh, okay. Oh, I need to close this. I'm not doing that anymore. As a reminder, this is what we're doing. We're moving the whole encoding numbers text from the WordPress site to the new page. We're recreating this entire page and putting placeholders for all of the dynamic diagrams and stuff that are in here. Even this one. Isn't that tricky? We're gonna turn all these into React components um as we go along, but I'm going to just add placeholders for them for now. So that's what we're doing. This is where we are recreating them um on a local server. Okay, back to the drawing board. I highlighted those lines and did add this too. Pretty sure, yes, code example two. So now we have this paragraph. Okay, and it says now when you hover near the min max values, you see the size of representation remains consistent. You might also notice some bits will now represent more values than others. And now we have a new figure called the bounded scalar encoder. So this is gonna be a new thing. So let's take this. I'm going to like lay it out, lay it out, um put it in here the way I think it should work. And then we will yeah, so this is gonna be a div. This is gonna be bounded scalar encoder. And we'll just close it off there. So it basically has an id and it will have all of these other and then this will be the, yeah, so I think we're gonna use the exact same parameters for this. The only difference is what I'll be describing in the text, which is how it is, how values are clipped. A better name for this might be clipped. Clipped spatial encoder. Um, but I'm gonna leave it for now. So we don't have this component yet, so um this is gonna be interesting, because this is the first time we're going to probably have an opportunity to introduce an abstract base class. Because I'm gonna be creating, so initially what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna copy and I'm gonna paste the exact same, no, 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 the exact same file. Let's rename it to bounded scalar encoder. And really, all I need to do excuse me is change this to bounded. And that's what gets exported here as well. Um, so this is a lot of duplicate code, but it will most likely work. Uh I do have to import it, I think. In coding numbers, so it's just like I did here. Simple scalar encoder will say comma bounded scalar encoder. Is that how you do this? In Python, this is how I would do it. Import something, comma, something. But I don't know. Whoops. So that should, this, whoops, this should work now. Okay. So we don't have anything down here. It's just, it's exactly the same encoder, but it works, right? This one should not affect that one. So I'm gonna keep this one all the way over to the right here, and when I move down, this one should not be to the right. It should be over here, right? So these should be completely independent, and they are. So that's good. Um, but they're basically two instances of the same component. I don't want them to be the same component. We're going to um we're gonna fix it, so they're both basically um have the same base class. Uh, and the difference here in the bounded scalar component, or the bounded one, you can see here. Okay, so see the difference in how this is pointing from a bucket or from a cell in the output space, not a bucket, from a cell in the output space, it's telling you all of the whole range of values that cell represents. And you can go across the whole thing, and it's basically consistent. Every cell has the same width. The width of its range is the same until you get to close to the edges, and then it gets weird. So that's what the bounding or the clipping that we're talking about is. Otherwise, you'll have an encoder where some cells represent a smaller range than other cells, and that may not be how you want to represent your value. That means that encodings at the fringes or the edges of the scalar range you're trying to encode will have less representation than those in the center, and that's not necessarily what you want. What we have here this should be ten. So this looks like a bug. Is this a bug? I can't remember. I will get to this. This is the next one we're gonna do, so if there's a bug, we'll fix it. Uh, but you can see how it's different, because when you get to the edges, the the thing just stops. I don't think it is a bug, actually. It's not necessarily that, it's how you want your data to be represented in the output. Do you want it to slide off the edge? You know what I mean? When the value gets close to the edges, do you want it to be represented less? Maybe not. In this case, it's not represented less, but it is bounded. That's why I'm calling it bounded. So the it's a fundamental difference in how you wanna represent a scalar number scale. Um, so you have to think about these things when you're encoding for numbers. Um, okay, so that's the next diagram that we're gonna do. And like I said, this is incomplete. Uh, so um this thing, let's, perhaps we should um so here's where I have to make a decision. Maybe anybody who's watching can help me. What you'd rather watch? Would you rather watch me try and put in place an abstract base class on top of bounded scalar encoder and simple scalar encoder that we can use um for all of our as much generic stuff as possible for these diagrams that we're creating that are combining D three and React? Or do, should we continue to flesh out pages by grabbing content and putting scaffolding up so that at the end of the session we'll have a complete page with all the prose and just scaffolded diagrams? That's the question I'm facing. Right now, I'm gonna take a quick break, and I will be back. And that, and there's that. And there's that.
That's what I'm talking about. Some guy drove by my livestream and just yelled nerd. That's cool. Apparently his account is just for trolling math nerds. I'm not a math nerd. That's okay, I don't mind being misrepresented as one. Nerds, nerds. I got hated nerds. Yeah, I didn't think we were gonna have a research meeting yesterday, Falco, honestly. It was a last minute thing. It was like just happened. But it's on YouTube. It's already on YouTube. Made a little progress. Our page has a lot more content. This was like basically just one diagram earlier. Now we've got code examples, the one diagram, code examples, the links work, and then another diagram. And I'm deciding whether to do something with or not. And I'm deciding whether to do something with or not. This is a good song. Okay. Back to the drawing board. I never announced I was doing this on the forum or Twitter or anything. Or maybe, I think I did on Twitter. Um... So should I just make it easy and just give the link? I can play a rudimentary version of this song on saxophone. Okay, I made a decision. I'm not gonna do the abstract base class today. We're gonna have to do it. That's just something you have to do when you're doing this type of programming. But we're just gonna focus on creating content and I will, um, just create empty shells. So what we'll do is, here's what we'll do. We'll create an encoder that basically does nothing. Um... Yeah, that does noth- it'll just return an SVG uh, with nothing, with just an ID. That way we can link to it and that's it. So nothing else. So debug style, the properties, we're not gonna do that either. Let's, let's call this a stub scalar encoder. Stub scalar encoder, stub, let's, no, 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 no. Diagram stub. Call exactly what it is. Okay, so this isn't gonna happen. None of this stuff is gonna happen, so... Prop types, nothing from D3 is gonna happen. None of this stuff's happening. None of this stuff's happening. Diagram stub. Super props, I will keep the ID and that's it. The code doesn't exist, component did mount. I'm gonna leave this, because I know I'm gonna use it. But it's not gonna do anything. This isn't gonna do anything. That's not 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 gonna do anything. It's just a stub. It's a stub, it has a render, and everything's empty. All it does is stash an ID. Doesn't even validate. Uh, so now I have to change the name to diagram stub. What happened? Update imports. Oh yeah, yeah, do it. Thanks VS Code. Yes, I played the saxophone since I was fourteen, probably. Although I took a good twenty-year break and I started playing like five years ago. Again, I played with a band for fun for a little while, just like a rock and blues band. But I really like this type of jazzy sax stuff. Um, so apparently it updated my imports. But it didn't really. Oh, it calls it bounded scalar encoder, but I'm, I'm taking it from diagram stub. Wow. F2? It's called the diagram stub everywhere. Uh, no, no, it wasn't the Dark Side of the Moon solo. It was Wish You Were Here. Wish You Were Here has, um, not Wish You Were Here, uh, hey, what was it? Is it, it was one of the, uh, I thought, was it Hey You? Uh, no, 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 no. Uh, Us and Them, Us and Them. That was the sax solo that got me back into saxophone. Uh, like, well, that's the one I learned. That's hard, too. That was a hard one. Um, alright. So this should work now. Should not break anyway. But it is broken. Something's broken. What's broken? Why are the console errors? Oh, there's a click thing going on. Class name. Yes, 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 okay, I know what this is. This happens to me. No, no, it's not. On click, invalid event handler property on click. How is this coming, that's coming from simple scalar encoder? No. So there's something clickable. I'm not doing anything in the, oh, I'm probably trying to click it. I'm probably calling on click on it somewhere. No, that's not right. Yeah, uh, maybe it is. No, it really shouldn't be. This is just a stub. There shouldn't be any, it handles its own click, clickableity. Bounded scalar encoder, they have different things. This shouldn't matter if I have this or not. This shouldn't matter either. I'm just trying to get it as simple as possible. Why would that cause a problem? Let me, let me re, let me just restart it just to make sure, because I changed a name and you never know. The funny thing is, everything loads. It's just saying invalid DOM property class, did you mean class name, at encoding numbers 110. Oh, okay. Yeah, this is, so this is just in some of the code that I copied, ended up copying and pasting. I gotta do that here, too. Um, honestly, I don't even have the CSS for this stuff yet, so why have it, you know? I mean, the only reason that's there is to apply some CSS and we're not even doing that right now, so let's just simplify, 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 and just get rid of everything that doesn't currently serve a purpose. Don't tell me anymore. Okay, cool. So that, so I got rid of those errors. Oh, there's still one. Coding numbers 133. Same thing here. Class name, class name. Well, let's get rid of it, like I said. Do I work for Facebook? No. I don't even have a Facebook account. Delete your Facebook account. I work for Numenta. Numenta. Um, I'm happy to take questions on it if you have any. I am cleaning up this crud. Is that, so here's another description I will get rid of. I missed a div somewhere. I think I missed a div somewhere. There it is. Okay. What is Numenta? Well, I just put it in chat. Visit numenta.com for information about Numenta. Um, and also, what you might be more interested in is HTM, hierarchical temporal memory. That is a technology that we are working on. We are reverse engineering the brain, neocortex, and thalamus circuit, trying to understand how intelligence works. And, um, we've got a pretty good idea and it's been, we've been doing this for a very long time. And, um, I think we've made a really good amount of progress since I've worked for the company. Uh, I've seen consistent progress in the, in evolution of the theory, so I'm happy. It's, it's modern magic. Nothing's magic. Okay, what screwed up here? Um, it's another like on... No, this isn't machine learning. This is machine intelligence. This is nothing like the machine learning that's on the market today. They, they are not intelligent systems in the way that we are building intelligent systems. Okay. Coding numbers 135. If there is an on click in here somewhere? There is. Run can script one. Um... How about this? Alert, fix me. How's that? But it has to be what? On, it doesn't like on click, right? That was the... Expect that on listener to be a function, so the string, oh, so it actually wants a function. Okay, I can do that. On click, so basically this. I'm learning React here, by the way, like as I go, so... Is that what they wanted? It didn't do it on click, though, did it? It just did it. That was weird. Why would it? There's another run can script. Another run can script. On click, fix me. Um, huh, I would assume that it would run that when it was clicked, but... So it wants a real... What do you mean on click? Okay, okay, okay. I think I know. I think I know. So it does have to be a capital C. Oh, come on. That's not it. Alert is not defined. Okay, there we go. Uh... I don't know why alert wouldn't be defined, but it's not. So where's that thing I'm supposed to click now? This is in, notice how the range, notice how as you move towards the min, there's a couple of these things are clickable, but I can't tell what they are. Okay, what I need to do here, because I don't wanna worry about all these clickable components at the moment, um... Let's just find all the clicks. On, how, why did it do that? On click. On click, on click, on click. Okay, so let's change these, it looks like there's three of them. The one I was messing with, this one. This one. Okay. Um... But I just wanna get them to work. And it would be nice if they were underlined, you know, in... They should be underlined. So can I just change this? Is there really no underlining for links? So like an A, uh, not hover, but just like all the time. Call it style, no, um... It's some type of style that's underlined. Font style. Underline, no, font decoration. Isn't it font decoration? Text decoration. Underline. Shouldn't that work? Now that I, but I still have to fix this. So it's not even compiling. It does not like this on click. So, okay, so let's take the on click out completely. But can I see, yes, yes, see the underlines? Okay, so I can see the underlines. That's the main thing. I just wanna make sure. I can see the underlines because I want to make sure that it's obvious they should be clickable when they're not. So there's, there's the one. I don't want that to, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna remove them and just make them As. Click here, click here, and then the last on click is down here. Remove that one, too. Okay, so those things are clicks that need to interact with the diagram. Okay, so, so this click needs to call something on that diagram to interact with it. Um... So, but I don't think I'm gonna do that right now. I'm going to continue scaffolding. So, yeah, so I'm gonna scaffold all the way down the page and then I'm gonna create um, new Trello issues for each of the diagrams that need to be moved and we're just gonna systematically complete this page. That's what we're gonna do. Okay, so I got my diagram stub that basically has nothing, so I think that part is working and um, let's, let's not even call this an SVG, let's just make it an H3. And, and say diagram stub here. And let's actually put this dot ID. Diagram stub, bounded scalar encoder. Okay, cool. Alright, so that's how we're gonna stub everything. This link should still work. Um, and none of the clicking is gonna work at all. Okay, let's, let's review our changes real quick and make sure, um, everything looks good. So we changed code to code syntax so that we could continue to have code blocks. Uh, I added underlining to all clickable links, well, all As, A elements. We added a diagram stub and we, we added a bunch, bunch of stuff to encoding numbers, changing the ID. This is a good div, too. Okay, cool. Um, let's see, do I have Git integration? Perhaps I can just, what's this? Session, oh, these are the sessions. Oh, these are, these are the folks that have, um, hey, hello. No, I'm not gonna invite you by email like that. Um, this is the live sharing thing, which, by the way, if anybody's following along, you can follow me. Did I already put it in? Here it is. Copy link, in case anyone wants to follow along on Visual Studio Code. You can, live, you can actually highlight code on my screen um, using this. Uh, so let's go back to Git. So all the stuff we just changed, Git add components, everything in components is good. And the pages, Git add pages. Okay, um, moving content and scaffolding diagrams. And I might as well just push it to my origin. Good, great, grand. Okay. So I won't need the stub anymore, but I still need to push through all the rest of this content for this page. And most of this is gonna be more diagram stubs. Okay, so, but not this. This is a complete code reference, so this is, this is legit content. Close, close, close. Okay, so that's, this is after the first diagram stub, which is the bounded scalar encoder. We go and we have a section called complete code reference. And, um, it references the simple scalar encoder in, I'm not running this anymore, am I? It will reference directly. Still building. There we go. The scalar encoder in GitHub. And this is the exact code that we're using to do scalar encoding. Um, and the bounded scalar encoder in GitHub. So the, again, that's the code. And then I think we show code examples next. Yes, and then we've got this code example. Blah, 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 blah. Uh, very simple function. Yes, okay, so let's take this out. Put it in here and do what we're gonna do. So first of all, this whole JavaScript block is going to be defined up top where, what am I calling this again? Sorry for all the scrolling. Code example 3. We'll put that in a constant up here. 3 equals that. Okay, ID code example 3, class figure. We, um, do need to do this, but we don't add the figure. And we don't need this div description. And this is gonna be a code syntax. So code syntax. Code example 3. Should be it. And this is end of that div and then this span is just the beginning of the description. Remove that div. Oops. Okay. So that's code example 3. That should, should render. There we go. Looks good. And again, we haven't styled any of this really, so it looks very bland, but that's okay. We can, styling can come later. Wow. Keep pressing the wrong button. Okay. Um, another figure. This one is gonna be example bounded scalar encoder. Okay, so let's grab this. We don't need the figure bit. So this is gonna be a diagram stub like this. And I don't know what the terms or anything are gonna be. We, we really... That's fine. We'll leave that because it's actually right. Um... Both of these, or this one. So what we'll have here is a diagram stub called example bounded scalar encoder. And I... I'm not sure these values are gonna be right, so I'm just gonna take them out. This is gonna go after it in class description, but we don't need it to have a class. Just div. Okay, let's take a look at that. We should get stub. Example bounded scalar encoder. Okay. And now we have another section called output parameters. Two, or one paragraph. Okay. Output parameters. And another figure. This is called output range. So this is yet another diagram stub. And the, the rest are basically like header, description, figure, header, description, figure. So we're just making a bunch of diagram stubs. Stub. I call this output range. It's not really the most fun type of coding to do here. But once we're done, we'll have everything scaffolded up and we can come back and just actually do the more fun work of dealing with the diagrams uh, as React components. Okay. Another section. I think I'm gonna group these a little bit more tightly. This. Sort of like in sections, like H3. Okay. So this is encoding by min max, which is another diagram. Well, there will be another diagram. The next diagram is min max scalar encoder. Here's the diagram stub. Take this. Okay, min max scalar encoder. Put that together. That should be a whole section. Encoding by min and max, diagram min max scalar encoder. Again, we are on this page encoding by min and max, so this is the diagram that we're stubbing. And the idea is you can change the minimum scalar value and the maximum scalar value and encode any, encode the number line between those pretty easily. Even if you make one bigger than the other, or the min... Oh wait, I made that so you couldn't do it. This is a range of one. Anyway. Uh, next is encoding by bit resolution. So... Encoding by bit resolution. So let's just take this whole, let's take this whole... I know we don't want that. I know we don't want that. Let's take this whole block. Put it in. So first off, a diagram. No, no, not diagram. This is fine. This is fine. That's fine. This is where the diagram goes. And it will be called by resolution scalar encoder. Take this off, take this off. And that, and then there's a little bit more text. This one. Take that. Pop it on the end. And that should look good. By resolution scalar coder. This is the boring part. It's always the boring part. And then we have this and then another another, uh, code example. Okay, so now, now we're talking about cyclic encoding. And then we have a cyclic encoding code example. Okay, so let me take this whole code example. Whole code example and, and lay this out. Wait, let us make sure the cyclic encoding looks good. No errors, great, okay? And now the code example. So first of all, this JavaScript we will take out. Put up at the top. This is code example 4. Code. Example for... And we're gonna do the same thing that we did before. We're gonna change this to a code syntax. And actually, this is what we do. We put the code right in the middle. Code example 4. That should, and I don't think there are any highlights. Oh, but we do need to add a... To get, to get a good ID around it. And this is something I would like to fix. We'll do this. And then, um, it is code example 4. Like so. Okay. Code example 4. Is it there? Yes. Code example 4. Apply bitmap mask at index. So this is all you gotta do to turn something into a cyclic encoder. Is override the bit that applies the bitmap mask. Okay, um, next is a paragraph and another figure. Okay, so let's do that. Paragraph and another figure. So we don't need the figure. We do, we need the diagram. Or just go way down here. Good grief. There it is. Copy the last stuff. Output range. Okay. Take off this bit. Let's see if we get a cyclic encoder stub. Yes. Okay. Um, there's an onclick. It's on click. The coding number is 217. This is a large... Ah ha. Let's remove the onclick. I should code wrap. How do I? Wrap, wrap. Sometimes I want to be able to turn wrap on and off like while I'm in the middle of something. I think, uh, I found that, what is this? This weird function like P? You can do a lot of things here. Toggle word wrap? No. Wrap? No. Not word wrap. It's line wrap. Line wrap. Might as well wrap it editor word wrap column. Might as well wrap at the viewport width. Let's just do this for now. I would not, I don't like to keep it like this, but I'm gonna do it for now. That's okay. Okay, that's not so bad. Not so bad, I guess. Okay, anyway, at least now I can see there's no more clicks there. Okay. We're all good? Go away error. Go away warning. Okay, no more warning. Cyclical encoder goes to the code for the cyclic encoder. This steps that, that is... All right, we're, we're getting through this. Okay. Now there's a lot of text. Text, 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 and then a figure. So let's put all the text in. Okay, this is no longer valid. This is... Okay, discrete versus continuous. All the examples are good. This is, this should look good. I haven't gotten to that yet, but category encoding and time encoding is coming next. Okay. We're getting there. We have another figure to do. Which is, which isn't really a figure. This is gonna be a diagram. I don't have to go back so far to get to my... I'm using this, this, this Mac plugin. I forget what it's called. Fit flycut. But it lets you have like this clipboard that's a queue like in your clipboard. Uh, so this is called continuous overlap. And we can remove this description and this div. And, oops. Get another one there. Continuous overlap stub. And now we've got two more big paragraphs. I can format one, but not the other. Okay, so we got another couple of functions here that we're just gonna remove for now. Click functions. I'll, I will program those later. We're gonna go back through and look for them. There's, there's custom code that interacts with components to do this. But for right now, they're not gonna work. Let's see. They should have lines though, so this, this close far, that's, those are gonna interact with this continuous overlap component. What they do is there we go. Continuous overlap. So two close values. These two values are far away and then it splits them apart. So it sort of runs a script on the component. If you click two close values, it closes them together. And so basically you're just spreading them far and close. So I have some function that, that's basically updating it. Updating the values that are behind these. Or you can do this manually. But it shows you overlap essentially. And how encoding changes sort of the way values in, in your little encoding world um, are represented as, as they overlap. Okay. Let's try and get this page done. We're almost there. Okay. Discrete encoding. This is again another diagram. I don't understand why. Here, let's do this. Discrete encoding. For that, give it this description. Align it, give it a stiff. That should be it. There it is. Stubbed out. Okay, now we have a paragraph and then a figure. Okay, let's do the, let's do this all. Let's do this all at once. Let's do this whole thing. Let's do everything. Let's do the whole thing. Just gonna fill it out. Okay. That is just a paragraph. That's fine. This is a code example. So I wanna take this JavaScript out. Call this code example 5. I'll figure out how to put these in line, probably. They should be in line. Code example 5. Don't need this. Don't need this. What we need is code syntax. Code example 5. And then a div around that. Calling it code example 5. Until I figure out how to add that to code syntax. That's one thing that'd be easy to... Easy little, what happened? What did I do here? Oh, yeah. Okay, so, so while I got that on my brain, let me just create a new add ID, um, let's say, uh, add ability to specify ID to code syntax. If I had that, then I, then I wouldn't need to do this, put this div around it at all. So something to think about. Get rid of these divs. Uh, why is this? Oh, yeah, it's just wrapped. Okay. Okay, that should be code example 5. This code is here. This is now configured, blah, 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 blah. Okay, so then we have an HR, which I don't know, we should really or not have an HR there. And then this is gonna link to the next section. Which can't have that. This also. That, that trailing forward slash is problematic. I don't know why, but... Okay, let's take a look at it. That should be the page. Discrete versus continuous. And assuming all of this works. At least, most likely work. This, all of them seem to work that I've done so far. Cyclical category encoder. Next section. Okay, so encoding numbers. Let's look at this very first example here. First diagram. Figure one, a value between zero. So I do think I need to put this span in a div. Can I just do this? What was the, is it just, it was alt up, I think. Alt up, yes. That's what I wanted. So I put that span in a div. This'll sync over there. I'm, I'm probably gonna wanna do that for each of them. Yeah, I'm pretty certain. It's not a huge deal. I think I took the div out. Doesn't matter. Example three. Okay, this is styling stuff we'll figure out as we go along. Sort of styling. But, so the whole thing, at least for encoding numbers, is done. I'm gonna put this into done. I'm definitely all in on React. Simple page styling is done. Uh, I'm gonna leave this in review. I don't care about that right now. Um, so now I've got fifteen minutes until eleven. Let me just take account of where I'm at and then create tickets for the next things that need to be done. GTA Rialy light. Getting hot. I'm not in my Twitch demon. That's not what I want. Building HTM systems. I'm not building sky nets. Okay. Git status. All I have touched is encoding numbers, which makes sense. Add pages. Added encoding numbers content. So this is how, if any of you guys are, are watching and you wanna do PRs to, um, change anything, this is how I would want you to do it. Create a local branch. Name it whatever you want. Push it to your remote branch. And then, uh, you can go to your remote branch at that point. Where were we? So my remote branch is obviously, uh, Rialy, building HTM systems. And if you go there, you'll, you'll see there's, it sees you have a branch and, and you can create a pull request right from that button, which is super convenient. And then you can look and compare what you've done. Code, code syntax. Um, I added diagram stub. Uh, some text decoration delay. Lot of changes to number encoders. The page itself, you know, and I put in all these stubs and content and all that jazz. Uh, Falco, you think you'd be more comfortable making a completely separate Git archive? And what do you mean? Git archive? Okay. So then all you do is just create a pull request like this. And then I will come along, and then anybody can see it here in the pull request tab and you, and you look at it. Oh yeah, you, you have to have a Git account to do pretty much anything. Git account. Uh, oh, you'd be more comfortable creating a Git account? No, see... Falco, you gotta learn it. You gotta learn it. It's not hard. It's, uh... Follow along with me. I'll show you how. Like, I'm, I'm not gonna go get somebody's code. If they wanna submit code to this project, they're gonna have to create a pull request. That's just the way open source works. So, um, I would be more than happy if someone wants to do what I just did. Basically, you just, you clone it, you create a branch. There's lots of tutorials on how to do this, but... The basic Git stuff is not that hard. In fact, this is probably still relevant. Hold on here. This is gonna be sort of a blast from the past. Git. Git. GitHub. I have a video. New pick development tutorial. Using Git, GitHub. And we don't use Travis. Well, we still use Travis, so this is probably still totally relevant. And this walks through everything. From cloning to, uh, creating a fork, forking cloning, creating a pull request, all that stuff. And it's a mo, you know, a lot of it's sort of pseudo outdated, but the Git commands are still the same. Anyway. So, um, the cool thing about this is, I, there is, uh... If you've got continuous integration, it'll automatically run on it. So once we have tests in place, so for example in simple HTM, if you change any of the code, the CI will run the tests and make sure that it's not breaking anything. So that I can look at it and say that it's decent before I merge it. Oh, checks have failed. All checks failed. So I don't even know what. This is not, this probably won't work on a, um, a pull request because it's a deployment. Um, so I don't care. I'm gonna merge it anyway. But, but what that will do is building HTM system. So this, that, that Travis job um, deploys to this URL through Heroku. So this app will soon be updated with the most recent content that I just loaded. Probably not yet. Just, but give it a moment. We go to encoding numbers. And in five minutes or so, I bet this will be, um, ready to go. Uh, okay. So now, we have a bunch of scaffolding to do. We need to, we have a bunch of diagrams to create. Bounded scalar encoder is one of them. Create bounded scalar encoder diagram. Create example bounded scalar encoder diagram. Um, create output range diagram. I'm also gonna add one for, uh, create abstract base class. Wow, my door just opened. Can you see that? You can't see the door opening, but it just opened. It's the wind. Really, it's just the wind. It shouldn't be here anyway. Yeah, I forget, you know, Falco, if you're new to programming, software engineering in general, I mean, and you're trying to understand HTM and all this code, it's a lot. It's a lot of stuff you have to learn. Um, I'm lucky enough to have a lot of software experience. Okay, create, create abstract base class for diagram. I, I'm gonna do this one. I, I, I'm gonna do this one. Any of the other stuff, honestly, unless I've assigned myself to something, anybody can grab one. Like this, this one I should probably put on here. The things that, here's the things that I wanna do. Is to program car plants and ladder logic. I don't... Car plants like manufacturing plants? Is ladder logic like a visual, um, programming environment or something? Okay. Uh, diagram styling pattern. Automotive, yeah. This is a bug. Unit tests. Specify ID, create bounded, create bounded. I'm gonna do this one too. This will be, I, I wanna do the first couple of these just to make sure that I'm... Let's, let's put this, let's do this next essentially. We're, this is what we're gonna end up having to do next. But I'm still going to dump a bunch of these, um... Type of language program, programmable logic controllers. Yeah, I have no experience with that sort of programming at all. Okay, by min max scalar encoder is the next one we wanna create. Create by min max diagram. Next, by resolution scalar encoder. Diagram. These are all gonna be React components and they're all gonna be using the same abstract base class. That will hopefully help us set up, you know, the, the stuff, the boilerplate stuff we need for D3 React integration. Cause there obviously is some. Oh, I should put... I always forget to, uh, update my description. Oh yeah, I already put, okay, it says React D3, simple JS. Okay, just checking. Is this up to date? Does this get deployed? Nope, not yet. It will. It always does. It just takes a while. Okay, um... Continuous overlap diagram. Discrete encoding diagram. I'm gonna put on some, I gotta put on some lo-fi. I love this lo-fi, uh, playlist. Okay, discrete encoding. Create discrete encoding diagram. There's a lot of diagrams just for the encoder page. But they all have to be done like separately. And this includes the interactions. You know, I haven't really described the interactions, but some of these contain interactions that we're also gonna have to figure out. Okay, uh, can I? I need to categor, the ability to specify ID to code syntax, um... What would I call this? I don't know, grunt work? Okay, this is a diagram. Diagram. This is also a diagram. How can I do this to many at once? Can I select? No. So just do it one by one. Diagram. Labels, diagram. There's always this, you have to do this. I would be doing this in Jira if it wasn't for this. Okay, so these are all diagrams. And when I say diagram, you know what I mean. I'm, I'm creating this idea of a diagram which is like, which is a React component with a D3 interaction and, and a user interaction. The, and I'm, I'm using the React, this is the thing I don't like about it, is I'm using sort of the React user interactions and responding with D3. I would prefer to use D3 interactions, but it doesn't seem to be the, the right way to do this. Okay. Alright, time for me to take a break and then we're gonna come try and make this abstract base class diagram. Review IP screen. I'll be right back. Okay, I'm back. Okay, so, um, I was just thinking... Here I am. Git status, so here I'm gonna show you how to use Git a little bit. So I just merged the PR that was based off this branch. So I don't need to be on this branch anymore, I don't need it at all. If I, if I say git branch, I can see all the different branches that I've created. I use, I create a lot of branches and forget about them, once you create a branch and you create a pull request on that branch and it gets merged in the master, you don't need it anymore. So you end up with a lot of branches to clean up. There's one called where it's at. I don't know what that is about. Anyway, I don't need this branch anymore, so I can git checkout master, which is the branch that's always, it's the D branch. Then I can, should be able to git pull from upstream. So... Let me show you the remotes. Remotes in Git, or Git remote. Remote, a remote in Git is a location somewhere out on the internet that, that you can push and pull to. So I have upstream, which is the main one, that's the HTM commu-, HTM community GitHub one. That's the, that's the one I forked. And then I have my origin, and that's my fork, that's Rialay. So if I want to sync, if I wanna make sure that my local development copy right here is in sync, I have to git pull from upstream master branch. And that will get me all the latest stuff, this is the stuff I just merged in that pull request. So there it is. Uh, so I'm up to date, now I don't need that other branch anymore, that one that I just created. So I can remove it. I usually don't clean up like this. So I deleted that branch, I could delete most of these branches, but I'll just leave them. So now I want to work on something else, I'm gonna add an abstract base class, so I'm at tip of master. I'm synced with the most recent copy of upstream. So now I'm going to create a new branch that I'm gonna work off of to add a feature. Git, branch, no, no, it's, the shortcut is, so I'm gonna check out a new branch called, um, diagram ABC. I'm calling it diagram ABC because in Python, they call this an abstract meta class. A-ABC, a beta class, ABC? Am I using the right term? Python ABC meta, that's it, ABC meta, abstract base class, alright. Um, so that's what we're gonna make it, I wonder if this refreshed yet? No, it hasn't deployed, that's okay, it always does eventually. I can get rid of this, so, so essentially, but when we're done with this, we're gonna have two diagrams that work on this page, this is one, this is the only one that we have that works. When we're done with this, we're gonna have this one, bounded scalar encoder that also works, and they're gonna have all of their replicated code in an abstract base class. That's the idea, so I'm doing a very typical programming exercise right here, like this idea of removing the code duplication by, by moving logic, shared logic up into an abstract class is really typical, like stereotypical thing you will do as a software engineer. Especially if you're working in object oriented code bases like React, what we have here. Um, and we're doing this in JavaScript, you'll do this in Python, you'll do it in Java, I'm sure that you do it in C++. This is a very typical object oriented thing. The trick is just, um, doing it a little bit at a time, in my opinion, do it a little bit at a time and try and make sure that everything works as you're going. I don't need this anymore. Okay, so, um... In my code, we are talking about this, simple scalar encoder. And then all my other diagrams are called diagram stuff. So what I want, the, one easy way to do this, this just exports just the encoder, so let's create a new file and we'll call this a diagram, I guess, we'll call it a diagram. We might wanna be a little bit more specific about it, cause what this really is, it's a React component that has D3 integration, so assuming, well, it's, it's a React component that gives the user a D3, D3 thing to interact with. The tricky bit is currently, well, we're handling the interaction through React interfaces and then updating D3, I don't know if that's a bad thing or not yet, doesn't seem very good, so we'll just call it diagram for now until we run into a naming collision. And I'll just start it off as the simplest thing, a di-, uh... Just call it a diagram. It doesn't do anything. So what I want, I want this... So I want this, this one currently extends React component, I want it to extend diagram. So I need to import diagram from, um... Can I just put dot? I'm not sure. I have a simple scalar encoder. Or can I just put input, import diagram? No. Let's try this. And... I don't even need, uh, let's just do like, I don't even need to override render, right? So I'm just like inserting a little shim here. Oh, sorry, I was ignoring chat, uh, sorry about the chat freezing, you know, I really can't do anything about that, I don't know how to fix it. "Is a branch a working copy that you can safely modify without breaking the original?" Yeah, bran-, that's, yeah. You can make, you can branch out from any point in your codebase, you can think of it as like a tree, you know, this, the state of your code over time, you can sort of think of it like a tree, every branch, you create a branch, you're like, okay, this is, I'm gonna work on this feature over here. And from that branch, you could create other branches, you know, and other branches. That all go back to the same root node, and Git operates on that idea, so that, um, you create a branch and once you're done with it, you can merge the whole thing back to the master branch. And then branches that branch after that will have all your changes, those that branched between the time you merged it, they're gonna have to, they have merge conflicts, okay, so then, then you have to look at someone else's code and your code and have a decent understanding of what's going on, so you can update your code or their code. That's the tricky part, but... Okay, I'm hoping this shim might just work. So... But the diagram has to, um, yeah, it extends React component. I'm sure I need anything else here. Eventually, all the D3 stuff I'd really like to put in diagram if that's possible, I don't know if that's possible. It's definitely not possible, they're gonna be too custom. Alright, let's just see if it's running. Uh... Okay. Can't resolve dot, okay. So this is probably just... So how would I... Just import from another, I should be able to import dot, do I have to say diagram? Dot slash diagram there. React is not defined. So in this simple scalar encoder, it didn't have to, uh... It knew it was a React, it knew it was a React diagram somehow. I wonder if I have to specify somehow, um... I don't know if it's out of tune, it's bending, I mean, the pitches are bending. Okay. So somehow I'm not, I'm not telling next, I think this is a next issue. That, um, this diagram requires React. Cause it doesn't have React component. So where do I do that? Let me look in the config, it has a config. Is there some special way to declare? So I could make this React dot component, and that should work. If I don't load this, it should work. Yeah. So how is this, how does this know it's, it ha-, it should get React component? And how do I specify that in my other component? All of these should, okay, oh, maybe I should just look up React abstract base class. React component abstraction. There we go. "Single level of abstraction, okay, learn how to make your React components easier to understand by following the single level of abstraction principle. Each method should be written in terms of a single level abstraction." Take this function. Learn React with me. What writing to... Next, so it's just talking about... Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know that this is helping. Uh, extends React component. It's not what I wanted. Components and properties. How to write an abstract class for a component, that's what I want, okay. Oh, maybe this is all I need, in prac- Import star as React from React. Maybe that's all I need. Let's see. That was it, that worked. Okay. Yeah, I think it did. Let me kill it, restart it. Refresh it. Certainly seems to have worked. Okay, so we have our abstract base class, now I just, I had to somehow specify to the, to next, whatever is building these React components needs to know how they link together, what requires what. And I was extending something that I hadn't declared as necessary yet, in this file, it implicitly knew it was necessary. Oh, maybe this doesn't work yet, cause I haven't done this yet, so... What we wanna do is extend diagram. No, it did work. Hooray, okay, cause I, it should work. Alright, so we can also test this. I think... Let's just do a console log. Inside diagram. Inside diagram, there we go, okay. So it did, it works. Uh, okay, so we have our abstract base class called diagram. And we have a simple scalar encoder that now uses it. Uh, but it, but there's nothing in the diagram, right, there's... Um, so we're going to also create another file, we're gonna call it a bounded scalar encoder. And it's gonna be super close to this, in fact, I'm just gonna copy it and change the names initially. And then we're gonna look and see the differences in them, in the logic. And pull all of the duplicate code up from these subclasses, what will be subclasses, into the meta class, the, uh, abstract base class. Okay, and we're not, and we're actually gonna be using the bounded scalar encoder. So I actually think the only difference between these two encoders is or two components is gonna be using a different encoder, so this is gonna be interesting, um... So we can probably do something even simpler than this, honestly. And I'm all for simplicity. Cause all we really want is a way for, um... I'm just thinking back, I mean, this is a very Java thing to do. Is, is, uh... You know, the, the structure that I'm, that I'm thinking about, this, cause the only thing that's different between these encoders as far as I can tell is, um, one is, like, the diagrams I believe are the same, let's, let me verify that first. How close are they as far as the diagrams, widgets, BHTMS, coding numbers? We have a simple scalar encoder, I don't wanna get into this nasty stuff, actually. Let's look at the, what it actually looks like. That old code is kinda nasty, so... So we've got this thing. And this thing. And I do, I... Uh, there's, there's, uh, there is one other subtle thing about this, actually, I think it's, I think it's incorporated with the encoder. It's that like, there's a reverse lookup in here, let's look in this, cause I remember this now. There is a reverse lookup in this logic. As, when we're right, when we're drawing the Bezier curves. I hope I said that right. We get the encoder, this dot encoder. And encode, encode, I thought we got something from it, ran- Is it range from input bit? Yeah, yeah, yeah. And in here, we call reverse scale, okay, that's the thing, that's the thing, that's... That's in simple HTM, that's in the encoder, um... I wanna open that now, okay, hold on. Okay, simple HTM code dot, uh... Yeah, so that's, so FALCO gets why we, why we might make an abstract base class, I think. Um, the user input elements are exactly the same for these two. Yeah, I mean, really, the only difference is, I think, I'm gonna verify this, but, but we've got, here's the scalar encoder, a simple scalar encoder. It has encode. And it does not have a reverse... See, what is that? I'm calling reverse scale on this, where's that coming from? I've totally forgotten. Reverse scale. Where's this encoder coming from? Git range, and we're sending it our own encoder, this encoder, which is being created in the constructor, I thought. Oh! Oh! That's tricky, okay, that's tricky, um... That's a little, that's definitely some inappropriate intimacy there. So my program, Building HTM Systems, knows enough about the simple HTM encoder to know that it is going to... It, it doesn't expose this in the docs or anything, it's, that it's gonna have this reverse scale, um, linear extrapolation function. And, uh, it's something that could, that I need to probably make better, cause this isn't, this is, ah... This is definitely an example of a code smell called inappropriate intimacy. I mean, I could certainly, uh... It's sort of a dynamic function, it's created, um... This is one of the nice things about JavaScript, honestly. But how to expose it, you know, the idea, it's, it's not necessarily exposed. Okay, I'm, I'm going to move past this and assume that both of these, scalar and the bounded scalar... Okay, the bounded scalar encoder has the exact same thing because it extends the scalar encoder. So I can depend on either one of those encoders, whether it is bounded or scalar, to have the same thing, so that tells me that the only difference between these two components is the type of base class we're gonna use. the type of base class we're gonna use for the encoder. In fact... So what's the, so what would be the, so actually, I mean, the simplest way to create this diagram would be to just have the type of encoder be an option, not introduce an abstract base class at this point. Let's, let's not do that. If we can not do that, it's a good thing not to do it. So let's not do it. This seems like a better idea. So we're gonna, we're gonna go back to extending React dot component. Um, a drive class still has access to this, yes. When it's done properly in JavaScript, there's ways to do it improperly in JavaScript. In Python itself, and yes, it's still true. Um, I suppose the base class is giving access to its components. Um, so it depends on different languages. Uh, Java, for example, has different keywords for, for different permissions. It can have a protected property, which is accessible to subclassed components, but private properties are not. Same with functions. Okay. So let's go back to where we're actually creating this. This may be, this may end up being really easy to do, which is, which would be really great. Code example one, here's our simple scalar encoder. Let's just add bounded equals false, or no, true. Let's say that's... In this case, it's false, but when we go to the next one... Let's make this a simple scalar encoder and, and tell it that bounded is true, and let's... Let's say this. Uh... It's just like anything, Falco, you spend enough time doing it. See, I got really interested in programming when I was, um, like, had something I wanted to do with it, so... It was all web stuff at the time, it was PHP. I was very interested in PHP and HTML and MySQL. That was my first real programming with a database experience was PHP and MySQL. And that was really loosey-goosey, there were like no rules, no rules. So none of these design patterns applied that I'm trying to teach you, just no rules. And, and you just end up writing such bad code, that you end up not maintaining well, and it was just really bad code. I am adding a bounded, is that what I call it? A bounded, it's either true or false, and what we're gonna use that for is, we're gonna say, we've got a scalar encoder and we've got a bounded scalar encoder. We're gonna import them both, and we're gonna use one or the other. Okay, um, so how do I do this in JavaScript again? Uh, JavaScript. I think it's just apply, yeah, 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 it's, I think it's apply, I'm gonna try it. Okay, let, um, encoder class equal scalar encoder. If this bounded... I'll use the brackets, I don't, I don't like using brackets. Encoder class equals bounded scalar encoder. And then I think what I have to do... You, you won't like the go-to when you've got, when you realize that you can go to the center of a loop and you don't know what count the iterator is at. Um... I'm trying to remember in JavaScript, I wanna use this encoder class. This may work, let's see if this works. If this works, I'll be happy, okay? Be very happy, because that means like, just worked. Alright. Here's the first one. Here's the second one. Holy crap, it did, it just worked. It just worked, and we didn't have to create an abstract base class. I was, I thought that was gonna be, um, hard to do, and I almost over-engineered this. I almost created, um, some, a lot, I'm probably, I probably will end up creating an abstract metaclass just to contain some of the D3 stuff that has to happen in all of them, but, but still, um... Look at how much code we wrote to do this. A few lines here, that's it. And then that. And it worked. Awesome. So that makes me pretty happy. That is a success. And it's bounded too, you know, so this bit works differently, see? And up here, oh no, maybe not. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, so that one slides off. And gets smaller. And this one does not slide off, it, it hits the wall and stays there. But this one also gets smaller, so I think this is the, okay, this was the bug I thought we were having last time. This, and I think this has to do with the reverse lookup that I was complaining about. Um, yeah, this is, this isn't the complicated code. This is, actually, you know, you, when you're dealing, when we're doing this visual stuff, you're dealing with lots of reference frames and... Keeping track of how things are transformed mathematically from one reference frame to another is complicated. And that's, in a way, exactly what HTM is about, reference frames. Okay, so, um, we just did... I don't even need to do this yet, so I'm not gonna do it, but I can't, but I did do this. Create bounded scalar encoder. Let's just commit what we did for this. Reference frame, um, like a coordinate frame, like, um, there's a reference frame. Remember, talk about reference frames a lot probably over the next year, I, I think it's a big idea. The idea of thinking in terms of intelligence in reference frames. But, but just these visualizations have their own reference frames, like, the value has a reference frame within the number line. The number line is its reference frame. The output encoding has a reference frame, which are the cells that it's being expressed within. Those are two different frames of reference. Um, the Bezier curve also is in the same frame of the reference, it's in both reference frames. So it has its own that spans both, you know, because it's pointing from one range to another in another frame. So these ideas, I mean, this is, it's complicated to get this stuff right, all of it at the same time, you know? I wouldn't, I wouldn't, certainly would trivialize it. I've done HTM and a lot of visualizations, client-side coding. Front-end engineering is a pain, is hard. It's, there's a lot of weird, weird rules and stuff, like, it was, it was almost easier to work directly with data. Because I started doing this as a data analyst, and the data makes sense, you know, when you, once you, um, understand how to slice it up. Okay, I'm gonna commit, right? You can also say git diff right here from the command line and see, uh, what has changed. This is a pretty efficient change. And I didn't even end up adding this as an abstract base class, but that's fine. Git add components pages. Um, created bounded scalar encoder diagram. That's it. And then I can push that to my origin, alright? So this, what this is gonna do, so when I, Falco, when I push to my origin, this is gonna take my current branch that I just committed my changes to, and it's gonna push it to my origin. So now it's out there on the internet. Or, or I have to name it diagram ABC. So I'm saying, push what I've got, my changes right now in my local diagram ABC, push it to a new, uh, branch in, at my origin called diagram ABC. So now we have it synced. And then it gives you this nice little link, and you can go right here and turn it into a pull request. See what your changes were, turn it into a pull request, and then all I have to do is come along here and be like, oh, what, what do we have here? Okay, that looks great, you know, and I can review the changes and merge, merge it easily. So, um, I've been using GitHub professionally as a software engineer for a long time now, and it's a very good tool, especially for open source code. Alright, so we've got a bounded scalar encoder diagram. I'm gonna go ahead and delete this branch, which, just to clean up. And... We've pretty much done that. Done that. It's reviewed enough for me. Um, I'm not gonna work on the ABC thing until I need to. I don't wanna re-engine, or over-engineer something, I thought that I needed to for that one, so I'm gonna pull it down. The next one to do, which I think I have time to do, is, um, example bounded scalar encoder. And that looks like this. Example bounded scalar, is that right? Figure three, right, yeah, code example, can't talk, can't talk. Complete code reference, yeah, code example three, so it's right after code example three. This might be just as easy to, um, to put in here too. So let's see. Um... So, and what am I trying to explain here? So see the classes as an example, and I guess this is just an example of one with zero min and max and ten and, and a hundred. Um, so maybe that's all I have to do, is just, that'd be great. Okay, so in encoding numbers then, instead of this diagram stub, I'm just gonna take this, basically. And we're gonna call it example bounded scalar encoder. It is bounded, and the values were max fifty, W ten, and a hundred. Max fifty. W ten and a hundred. Oh, that's the bits and the, that's, that's bits and width. Ten, width, a hundred. And I did give it an initial value, I don't know if... Oh, check it out. It did something, but it didn't get the, uh, it didn't style the, it didn't give the SVG the width that it needed. So that's interesting. It's probably because this width value is not what I thought it was, so... Five hundred is good, this is WN, but, okay, let's go look into simple scalar encoder. Um... Now, the, I think the problem is just this is specifying the, like, the UI width of the, of the window or the SVG component, not the width of the output. Come on, go to the thing, okay? When we create the encoder, look at this, we're hard coding W, so that's a problem, that's the problem. And, and I'm, and I'm getting these mixed up here, um... I should be, uh... Let's, let's change these terms, okay? This, I'm, this is confusing now. What we want is min and max is fine, value is fine, that's all in the reference frame of the input. The bits, the width is totally confusing, because what is it the width of? Um... Let's call this diagram width, first of all, let's see if we can change the name. Diagram width. And let's also change this to diagram width, just to be very explicit about it. This is the output bits. Output bits, this also. Cannot rename this element, output. And what I, geez, what I really wanna call this is, let's just call it N and W. Instead of output bits, this is gonna be N, right? N, yes, N, N, N. There is no more output bits, right? No, there is. Uh, whoops, I should've changed them all to N. Do it all, okay. So I realize, like, I'm breaking, I could be breaking all sorts of things, but at the same time, I'm in a branch, and... We'll find out soon enough. So I think we also just wanna do the same thing with W. Not, maybe we're not using it right now, um... Yeah, 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 here is where we wanna use it, this dot W, this dot N, bounded, okay. So now we have to change here. Bits is going to be W. Diagram width is five hundred. Diagram width is five hundred, bits is fifty. Now, in this case, I was specifying, I was trying to specify N. Okay, N is fifty. In this case, we're saying W is ten, N is a hundred. Alright. Um, yeah, you can do a default value. I think I did have a default value at some point. I could just do, uh... Hey, what happened here? That was weird. We could do, or, um, ten or something, but... Yeah, I could do this. We'll just set up default values like that. Here we go. Okay, now, let me get the, so now we need to add a stupid div around this. Okay. Just so that the figure thing bounces down, okay? That's great, that's what we wanted, a little example. Uh, so, oh, this one's off, I screwed that one up. Oh, I screwed this one up too. Okay, let's see how we screwed stuff up. The first one, I don't think I even tried to fix, so, okay, so this is gonna be... Oh, look, eighteen, I've hardcoded a value into here, eighteen bit long bit mask. So what I would want is diagram width here, this should be N, and W should be eighteen. That's where that eighteen came from. Value is twenty-seven point five. Eventually, I wanna put in things so you can change these and it changes the diagrams, that's one of the things that they do on, on Red Lobb, that website. Um... W and N, I, I feel like there's more... W and N are used somewhere else, there's, there's N. Bits to output. Okay. That looks like it's better. Okay, that's better. That's the unbounded version, and that seems to work. Although, there's still a, a problem with... There's still that bug, but I've got that logged. This one is broken, code example two. That's the bounded scalar encoder, where we're saying bounded is true. Oh, let's, oh, we wanna use the exact same parameters here, so let's just copy and paste them, so we don't screw that up. Obviously, something was wrong. There we go, so the bounded one is now working. And then this last one is also working too. Okay. Cool, so we were able to reuse the same React component for three different components, which is awesome, because check this out. In our old code, those were three different... Oh, no, actually it wasn't. It was the same one. It was the same one, but the code was a lot messier, honestly. Let's not look at it. Let's not look at it. Alright, so that, we just did one, right? We got a whole new component working. That was the, uh... Um, example bounded scalar encoder. So boom. Um, I'm still in the same branch, so, um... Yeah, I think it's better. Okay, let's, so I'm gonna go back to, I'm gonna check out master. Again, go back to the, the, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, so this is a tricky bit. What I wanna do is git stash. This is sort of a advanced feature, I guess. So I just stashed all my changes. I'm gonna check out master. I'm gonna pull upstream master to get all the differences that, that came with that PR, and I'm gonna get stash pop, which takes my changes and applies them on top of that, which is exactly where I wanna be right now. Now I'm going to check out a new branch called, um, bounded encoder example. Now I'm going to commit everything there. Added example of bounded scalar encoder diagram. Git push origin bounded encoder example. So I'm going through all this just to give an example of how, um, typical code changes are made. Open on up a pull request. This is where you want, you might wanna review and make sure that everything looks decent before you do a pull request. Looks good to me. I review my pull requests before I create them, and then I just instant merge, instant merge. Okay. So now I should go back to master, git pull upstream master, and I get all my changes back. Basically, what I just pushed, did that whole cycle, and I get it back once I get back to master. And we are right back where we started, but now everything's fresh and tip of master. Okay, um, next up, so create example bounded scalar encoder. We certainly did that. Let's see if this is up yet. Did it just go away? Building HTM systems. I tested it locally. I mean, if it, it's, uh, it works here, right? All three of these diagrams test, test out for me. I just tested them all. And that's what I just pushed, so now I'm gonna move on to output range. Uh, eventually, they'll all work here, whenever this decides to... I guess there is a problem with the build, but that's okay. I wonder what it is. Now I wanna look. Travis CI, oh, I actually have a link. There it is. Building HTM systems. This was a pull request. What about on master? It has been failing. So what's, why is it failing? Failed to compile. Cannot, module not found, code. Oh. Okay, let me try this. There, there might actually be a problem. I am right at master, so let's run script build. I've been running dev mode, I haven't been attempting to build. Uh, so the CI script, I think, is running a different command, so if it's failing on something, yeah, it's because of the code components. Um, so there's still something, uh... In pages. Pages, so it must be an index. How is that doing it? Oh, I know, it's the component showcase, right? Yeah, code syntax. That's all we need. So CI caught a failure. Now if I run this, hopefully it'll work. No, okay, let's see. Because of webpack errors. Okay. Hold on. Sometimes I have to, I just remove all the node modules and start fresh. You might think that's silly, but you don't know what's going on in there. You don't know what's going on. What is going on in there, okay? Run script build. Should've just be, and should be a build. Cannot resolve components, code. Okay, so where is this being used? It's in pages encoding numbers. No, 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 component showcase. Oh, it's still in component showcase, it's in the top. There. Okay, there, work. Weird noise. Okay, so that works, so this is gonna fix CI. So I'm gonna git add pages. No, 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 no. Git commit. I'm just doing this directly on the master, cuz I just wanna push it to CI. Uh, fixed CI. And I'm gonna watch it. So don't do this. Actually, you guys probably don't have permission to do this, unless you're, uh, unless you're trusted on GitHub and the HTM community. What this should do now is trigger a new build here. Any moment now. Any moment now should. Looks like 22 is underway. Once this runs, we should get our, whatever I've got running here on localhost should be running here at building this, this Heroku URL here. As soon as this build succeeds. And then my wife's gonna meet me for lunch, so I will be bowing out at some point. I'll probably come back and stream later on to some other work. I, I really like Heroku, that's just, it's, I've always liked Heroku. I think they started off doing Ruby, but pretty early on, they adopted Node, and for years, I've used them for deploying my Node apps. It worked. Now I think it's gonna deploy to Heroku. And, you know, we're in a pretty good place here. We, we did one, we've got more than one on there now. Uh, simple scalar bounded one, and didn't we just do another? It was an example, uh, yeah, example bounded scalar. This one just didn't have a diagram label. Okay, that one looks good too. Now the output range is a little different, so we've got something new here. And so this one, we'll have to put more thought, thought into about how we're gonna structure it. Uh, the top part's the same, but now we're adding this component that will change two of the values in the underlying diagram. So this requires a little bit of thought, because we're adding something, so I, I'm, I'm thinking we're, we maybe end up, um, extending simple scalar encoder with like, um, a, uh... An extension that, that allows access to the parameters of the encoder itself. And then we can use that for the next several, right? Hey, NetPixel, thanks for hosting me. Um, so that we should be able to do that with any of the inputs that we're giving it. Like, in this section, the min, the max, the W and the N, the, well, yeah, any of those. Um. Um, it's more than one, but it's buggy. Uh, okay. Okay, so I gotta go. I gotta go now. I mean, I appreciate you giving me the, 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 uh, the followers, I mean, the, um, the viewers, but I gotta go, I gotta meet my wife. Okay, hold on. So I'm gonna wind it down, but I think I committed, right? Yeah, so everything's, we're all up to date, and, and the Trello board is all up to date, and so we're just gonna keep moving on next time. So thanks, you guys, for watching. I am signing off. Um, I'll probably be back, uh, after lunch to stream some more on NAB, the Mitata Anomaly Benchmark. Take care.